As we can pull them over.
We are recording, sir.
Perfect. All right. Well, um, welcome everybody to the Huffington School Board meeting for Thursday, December 17th. It is 5:30 and with us this evening is Norm Gupel, Rob Nato, Andrea Folsom, myself, Jim O'Brien. Um, we, we, we saw Seth A-Frame's name, so Seth will be joining us any minute now. Um, and then Juliette Shahadi is our school board, school student rep to the school board. Um, and also Michelle Clark, our, our business administrator and Mr. Steve Chamberlain Superintendent of schools. Thank you all for joining us and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Is that, did you see that?
We sure do. Steve, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. So we are meeting again this evening as we have been since March, fully remote. And we're able to do that because of emergency declaration and an emergency orders had been issued by Governor Sununu that allows public bodies like the Huffington School Board to conduct our business fully remote. Under RSA 91A, public bodies need to have a physical location for their meetings for public participation, but because of the emergency orders, we're able to conduct our business virtually. As long as we allow for the public to be able to participate and to view these, these meetings. And so we have, are utilizing both Zoom, a link that brings people to Zoom that they can observe our, our conversations as well as a phone number where people can call in. And during the course of our meeting, we will have two opportunities for public comment. And I'll give instructions for how to, how to provide public comment as we get closer to them, but there will be one here near the top, the beginning of the meeting and one towards the end of the meeting for public comment. And then the board, the board will be voting by roll call vote, which is a little bit different than an in-person meeting. So all the boards votes will be roll call. And then all the other provisions of RSA 91A are being followed by the board. And so minutes for the meeting will be available per the statutory guidelines. And I believe that's it. I just want to make sure I got through all the stuff I'm supposed to get through. So thank you all for joining us this evening. Mr. Chamberlain, are there any deletions or additions to the agenda this evening?
The agenda is fine as it stands.
Perfect. Any correspondence?
There was a, a good number of correspondents that are in the folder provided with a meeting link.
All right. And we have two sets of minutes this evening to approve. And so I'd ask if there is a motion from the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on December 10th, 2020.
Make that motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none. Norm?
Norm Gupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And I would ask if there is a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the additional board meeting held on Saturday, December 12th, 2020.
I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All right, Norm?
Norm Gupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes as well. There was a, we had a non-public session on December the 12th and I didn't get the minutes out from that session in time. So those will be on the agenda for our next meeting. I apologize about that. So this brings us to our first round of public comment. And so I would just ask if, if there's attendees to this meeting who wish to provide public comment. You just move your cursor down towards the bottom of your screen and there's a raise your hand function. If you click on that, that will alert us that you wish to provide public comment. And we'll go in the order the hands are raised and I would just ask that when you're able to, that you would give us your name and your address. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. As I said at the top, there's another opportunity for public comments towards the end of the meeting. And so I'm not seeing anybody at the moment who wants to provide public comment. So we will close the public comment to move on to comments from the Huffington School Board. So I would just ask if any member of the Huffington School Board, which is probably comments, the hop right in.
Sure. I'll break the ice. Uh, I just want to take a second to thank, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a proud dad moment, but also include the community. Uh, thank you to my, my daughter Autumn and her classmate Carly for coming up with an idea of creating Christmas cards for our, our people over the Southern Center for Park Ave. And for really finding that holiday spirit in the community. I want to thank Trish Walton in her class and many other people in the community that really contributed to this. You know, 2020 has been a crazy year, but to bring some smiles to the Southern Center and Park Ave and to our churches. Thank you. You know, it's, it's a great idea. I'm proud, but it's also great that the school picked up on it just on their own and to really implement this idea. My last thing is just my thoughts and prayers are out to the community. There's some people who are going through a really tough time right now with their health. And I just wanted to let them all know that I'm thinking of them. They're in my prayers and that, you know, we're here if you need anything. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, Norm. Any other board members have anything to say? All right. So we'll move on from comments from the Huffington School Board and we'll move to presentations and staff reports. And so we have more work on the budget this evening. So I think I'm going to turn it over to you, Steve, to talk about budget development and tax rate impact.
Sure. Can you see that slide?
We sure can.
Great. So let's see a little bit. Just going to just review a little bit on, on where we have been. December 3rd, we began the formal process and that's we took a look at the expense side. Last week on the 10th, we looked at the revenue side and started developing the warrant. Tonight we put it together and the way we put it together is a tax rate. And so we're going to just introduce to really both ends of both levers tonight. So a little bit of where we are. Since December 3rd, Michelle and I have continually update where we are. So we've had two staffing changes. One at, you know, Harold Martin School Office Manager and we had, if you remember, a special education teacher changed. So this has now been updated to include those two staffing changes. There was a, a safety apparatus in the FY '22 budget that after discussing with, with Michelle where we are in safety wise, it's a camera that would support the new area of the middle school. And we felt that we really shouldn't wait for a camera for safety. So we moved that out of that budget and we'll take care of that now in just some equipment stuff. So since then, we've reduced the superintendent budget if you move by $34,101, we're at $9,640,000. So on the revenue side, based on last week, we have on the articles, both half of the maintenance trust, we said half was going to come from fund balance. And we said that the technology trust, that 25 would come from fund balance. So we've increased our revenue on that area by 125,000. We, after discussions, Michelle, we upped the, the adequacy figure from 95 to 97 and a half, which isn't the hundred percent, which the board still could do, but it increased. It, it, it reduced our deficit, our hole in, in revenue by 62,000. So there was an additional 62,000 there by just moving from 95 to 97 and a half. As discussed last week, we added a hundred thousand dollars to the fund balance expectation or projection or expect, yeah, the expectation. So that's now at 492. And for the first time, we put in a value based on discussions last week of increased our revenue out of tax rate stabilization to 200,000. And again, all those can be changed, all those, but just to put a placeholder in based on recommendations that we made last week. That's where we are. So all in, right now, it's a dollar 77 on the tax rate, which is an 8.6%, which is 1.3 million dollars. Okay. So that's revisions in a little bit on expense and taking a look at the warrant and putting in on, obviously, this does not include a teacher's contract, just to be clear. I want to make sure we're there. So that's where we are. So let's take a look at that, what that dollar 77, 8.6 increase is. Just unpack it so we can remember where it was. So we have $414,000 in this budget connected to the building project that was voted on April of 2019. That's the, you know, first bond in projection for a little bit of the second bond. You with me? So just to bring us back to where we were, Michelle and I looked at the bond schedule at a 2.25% increase going forward. And the last payment, if you will, could get us to about an 82 cent tax impact all in. So it's not there yet. It's 53 cents now. But if, you know, we have one last portion to add to this increase and that's based on it right now, an estimate of 2.25, we, we were able to get 1.76. So it may get better than that. So it's 53 cents now, but all in, it's 82 cents. In March, I keep talking about the dollar 15, but remember through Michelle's expertise, that was in the old valuation. So if you, if you do it apples to apples, it was projected at 88 cents. So we still beat the estimate and I think that's a, that's a comfortable estimate because 2.25 would be, you know, not a little increase in the rates between now and August when we hit. So and just remember that's when we promised in April and 15, it was a net three classroom. We're getting net four. There was no fire suppression. We're getting fire suppression. We're going to get pretty close to double the flooring. We're going to get, we've got a teacher's room at the high school. We've got a, you know, a renovated maintenance room with washer and dryer at Maple. So for all that extra, and there's more to come, we beat the estimate by at least six cents. You with me? So, um, and remember Seth asked about the major increases required for versus necessary. There's a lot more than 75 cents there, but that's a big piece of this increase. There was a, after all the revenue changes and, and the adequacy and that's tax rate stabilization and the increase in fund balance, we're still as a, we have a hole now of revenue of 330,000. So that's 42 cents on the tax rate and there's seven cents, of course, in statewide property. So that dollar 77 is not HR support, curriculum support, social work support, building level, special ed, the five positions I've talked about for about four years. It is facility project, required increases, revenue hole and statewide property. Okay. So, um, everybody okay? Just trying to get a sense of where that dollar 77 came from. So in, in speaking with, with, spending a lot of time with Rob, Finance Committee, Norm, all of us, Michelle working together. So we're proffering tonight, putting forward tonight, taking a look at the budget beyond the 414, the facility project. Because the facility project was a 72% standalone warrant article. Then we said, we said back then it was going to be a dollar 15 on the tax rate. We didn't say we were going to cut, you know, the budget to fund that dollar 15. We didn't say we were, you know, we're, we're doing four labs and actually adding a lab so kids can take more at the high school. So we're not cutting something, you know, we didn't say we're going to cut science teachers or we're adding four classrooms to support full day. So we, it wasn't about cutting teeth, you know, just so, or will if you just put your heads around just carving out the facility project for a little bit as we move through. So we are at right, we're 1.3 million, 177 and the bond impacts 414. Okay? So to get to a 5% increase, it's a 5% tax increase is a $718,000 increase. Okay. If you take, if you take 1.3 minus the 718 and you take away the bond to get there, a 5% increase without accounting for the April 2019 separate article, 72% of the people voted for, we would need to cut this budget to 189, cut 189,912, cut 12 out of that. I added a little digit there, but about $189,000 would get us to a 5% increase carving out the facility project. You with me?
If, can I, can I just jump in just for a little clarity? Maybe? I don't know. So just a quick review. So all in, including the bond, we're looking at 8.7. If we take the bond out, we're looking at 5.7% increase, correct? Just in general.
Yep.
Right. And now, and now what you're showing us is what it would take if that X-ing out the bond were it be at 5%, 4% and so forth.
Right. How much you'd have to reduce the budget to get to that level carving out it? So let's take a look at 4%. A 4%, well, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, just, just, is the bond amount the 287, oh, four, five, but you had the bond impact of 414. So I assume the 414 is the full cost, the full end of the bond.
Exactly. Thank you. Not the increase.
And for this year, the increase is 287.
Right.
Okay. And, and so just, so I'm clear when you, when we get to the 5%, the 718 increase, are you? Um, I should be better at math. I apologize. Is that because you're reducing it by 414 or you're reducing it by 287?
414. So I'm using the, and so if carving out the entire value of the bond, not just the bond increase this year, because do we cut for what we put in the bond? So this number right there, the 414 is carved out right now. Okay. Okay. So if we cut by 189,000, we get to a 5% increase, not including the bond. 4% is a $577,000 increase. In order to get there, after carving out the 414, the, we would have to reduce by $329,000. And to get to a 3% tax rate increase, which is a $429,000 increase, we would have to reduce $478,000. But in full transparency, that is leaving in a shelf, if you will, not factored in the 414. And I want, everybody okay? The next slide.
So my only, I guess my only question. And so I understand the full bond impact is 414, but you know, 200 or right around $200,000 is already baked in to the budget, right? So it, and I guess I'm wondering why we're not just subtracting the 287 rather than the full 414? Because our budget's not increasing this year by 414 because of the bond. It's increasing 287 because of the bond.
Absolutely. I, just the, the impact of the bond on the overall budget is 414. So whether it was last year or this year or the increase, that, that value baked in, do we reduce by the impact that was voted separately? And I can run it next week and we can look at the 287, but the 414, that 53 cents is impacting the tax bill. So do we, and it's up to the board, but that was the reasoning that I don't believe the 72%. Well, when it was presented, we, you know, it was to me a separate article where we're not going to cut to fund it.
But I got, I, I understand more clearly now why you put the 414 in there. So I, I appreciate it.
Everybody okay? So on transparency, because it is, so let's take a look at the $300,000 house. This now includes the, obviously the bond, right? Because it's going to be part of the bill. So a 5% tax increase on a tax impact on a $300,000 home would be $456. A 4% tax increase would be $402 and a 3% increase, $345. This is total warrant absent teachers contract. And I believe the 414, how much of that 456, 402, 345 is the facility project? I think it's about $150. Michelle can double check me on that, but I think it's about 150. So that's the question in these difficult times and trying to get to a place where the bond is integrated into the, into the budget. Do we just continually work on the increase, which we can absolutely, or do we understand that the whole bond is part, that 53 cents is part of the entire tax bill? And, and just trying to look at it through that lens, but I'm just throwing, you know, that's after just quick discussions with, with Rob and Norm today about that piece, about how do you handle the onboarding of a bond that was 86 cents or 88 cents. It's now 82 cents. We're getting more for the dollar. So what can the board do? So the board now has two levers. It has the revenue lever and it's got the expense lever. So for the expenses, reducing PPE, cutting some equipment, reducing staff, taking a look at the articles. Do we want to do a hundred thousand dollars out of the budget for maintenance? Do we want to do, so that's what we can do. Or do they want to try and get more out of fund balance? Get more adequacy to 100 or take more out of Article 10. Those are the decision, the levers to pull regarding getting to wherever the board wants to get. Uh, and, um, I mean, so that's in, in, how we do that, a 5%, 4%, 3% or go back and throw it all in and do with the 1.3 million, 1.32. It's certainly the board's prerogative, but though these are, you know, where we're at in this process. Tried to provide some scenarios, tried to find a different look and an honest look at the impact of the facility project, which is a success, which I think we can say is on track to be a very successful project. And how does that impact PPE, equipment staffing? Because, you know, because that's what we'll be doing. So again, what information do you need? Do you want to take a look at a 5%, 4%, 3% threshold as described? Do you want to look at it? I, I can just tell you, if we're going to reduce factoring in the, the facility project, it is going to, you know, we did this last year. It's 82% of the budget staffing. We're not going to be able to find $414,000 of pencils. Every single school was below what they were last year to start, I mean, at the presentation two weeks ago. There's really, we're not going to do it through that. It's going to be the levers to pull. Yeah, we have 100,000 PPE. We have done some stuff. I hope this helps. My intent wasn't, and by adding the 300,000 a home, it really does, I still want to stay transparent, but I also want to take a look at this as, as presented on March of 2019.
Steve, can you go back a couple of slides just to the, no, um, one more. Yeah, just to this one. Yeah. One, note one more ahead. I'm sorry.
This way?
There we go. Yeah, that one. Cause I, I just think that one's probably because the, at least for me, it's, it's the telling ones. If we want to get to those, if we haven't, if we want to get to those tax rate impacts or at least increases, that this is the dollar amount we'd have to shoot for. So that's helpful for me to at least see.
Simply, if you want to factor in the 414, add 414 to 189, add 414 to 329, add 414 to 478 and it's just a different tax.
And so I guess Rob and Norm from the Finance Committee, I don't know if you guys have anything that you want to add or that you talked about that Steve may not have covered. Just want to give you guys an opportunity. So I know you guys have been and talked about some of this stuff.
Sure. I, I mean, I think that it backs us up to what we were talking about last late spring and summer in terms of where is, where are the pressures and what have we pre-obligated ourselves to? And I keep using that term about a pre-obligation. Uh, I think I used the analogy a few weeks ago of, you know, people go out and spend money on Christmas in late November and, uh, in December. And then maybe a little bit, the jaw drops a little bit in January when the credit card bill comes in. Well, we went Christmas shopping for a school bond two years ago and now the visa bill is in. So, you know, my concern going in, and I think part of the rationale for the way that Steve has presented this is that we'll be back in that scenario of this is a big increase and therefore you have to cut. And I would agree with Steve, you know, we're really at the point where we're cutting program or tinkering with some of the revenue levers. So, you know, I think in our third iteration of the, the budget last year, we really got to talking about specific programs. And here we're talking more about what's a palatable increase. Which leads me to also think about, you know, this is a one year, looks like a big hit, right? So 300 and 456 dollars if we have that 5% increase, but we had literally almost no increase last year. So year over year, we're really talking about a $225 increase. And you had a year off. So, you know, the trajectory historically is that's right in line with what has occurred. So, you know, I don't mean to keep hopping back to it, but I keep, mean to keep hopping back to that because it's significant that we look at tax trends and the reality of those trends. So I think at this point, that's what I, you know, think in terms of how we talk about this, it's important. And then if we're going to get into reductions, where are those possibilities? Steve and I have talked about a few things that are pretty quick before it gets really hard. And we can get into that if you'd like. I don't know if Norm wants to jump in there or not.
No, I mean, I just, you said a lot of stuff I was going to say, Rob. I mean, we, you know, we have to look at the bond project, the bond project separate from the budget. It has an impact on, on the tax rate. It, we are, we are all aware about that. One thing I said to Rob today is, you know, if we're looking to reduce program and we're reducing other areas of the budget to fit this bond in, that's not the right direction in my, in my opinion, you know, because what will happen is if we go down that path, what will happen is the next budget, the increase will be substantial because we're going to have a bigger bond payment. Michelle, what would it be? 757,000? Sorry, I put you on the spot. My, 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 my point is like.
My hope would be, be a little bit less because hopefully it'd be less than 2.25, but.
So if you're reducing to fit this bond project in there, the increase next year would be substantial, would be, would be much bigger. And the, you know, the next two budgets in order to get Delta to be what it is on the fixed dollar, that's what 82 cents for the next 20 years or 18 years. These next two budgets, we gotta be creative and try to stay within, um, within, understand what we're doing. You know, my question for the board, I guess, would be, um, can we separate that? I mean, it does have an impact on the tax rate. I get that. I understand that. It's open. We're transparent about that. But the question for the board is, you know, when we're looking at what is inflation in a budget? Do we separate that from the bond project? Because the bond project with 72% of this community voted for it. We have capitalized far more, far more than we ever could in this project. And Steve went through it with fire suppression, which we're going to be voting on tonight for the grant, fourth classroom. I could go on and on about it. Most importantly, we're getting it almost 31 cents less. We'd be having a much harder discussion today if we had that on our plate. So I guess my question for the board is, you know, where do we look at? Do we look at them as two separate things or do we need to be more creative? You know, my recommendation is that we focus on them being different. The back of my mind, of course, we're going through a, a public health crisis. We understand that there's some people who might be struggling, but where can we find a common denominator as a board and say, this is fixed. This is what we can do for the school.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll just hop tail onto that, you know, if we go back to when we initially talked about what the expense increases were, uh, you know, we had $769,000 that were completely out of our control. And really our increases, and again, to, you know, third grade teacher, the numeracy assistant in the two IAs. Two of those things are relatively out of our control. You know, the IA positions are associated to our responsibilities to fulfilling IEP requirements. And if we talk about the third grade position, then we're talking about class size. And if we talk about numeracy assistant, then we're talking about how we're delivering education. So really outside of that 100 and, or $206,000, it's really about what do we want to deliver in terms of the education that we've typically done in this town? Or do we want to fundamentally change things, which is the long discussion we had last year? But I think we're also at that point, as, as Norm points out, that, you know, at some level, people need to. you know, at some level, people need to understand that there are increases that we cannot control, and this is the reality of the day. Um, and and if the town decides that that's what they want to do come come March, uh, then that's a voter decision that, you know, one would respect. But I would hope that as a school board, we say we believe in our educational model. We believe in the class sizes that we have. We believe in the programs that we're offering to kids in the middle high school. Um, and that they're all worth funding. And and I think that's, you know, to me, that's where we're at in terms of how we think about this. Um, now, we all know that there will be folks who it, it, none of this is going to matter. It's just going to see an increase and and they're not going to want to support it. But I don't think that should strike fear in our hearts as to what our primary job is, which is to fund an education system that's been working for a very long time. Might that change in the future? Perhaps. But for right now, this is what we're, what we're at.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll add in a question, you know, that was kind of, you know, asked in the budget committee, which was a good question. You know, they'd asked me to, you know, bring to this board at some capacity is how are we doing with the existing budget that we have right now? Are we meet the needs of our students? Where is, you know, how is the district performing with a budget that, you know, was really, really um, hard to pass last year? And I'm really not sure how to answer that question, you know, it, you know, I think Steve, Michelle, or, you know, our leadership would know, but there's a lot of variables that go into there that last year, you know, we had to make a lot of reductions. And it's a good question to know how are we handling what was given to us last year? And where are we going with this potential increase? You know, what fills the void that maybe we're not giving this year? That we really needed for the district that for next year, for the next budget justified, justifies having an increase. So I'm not sure how to answer that question, but I really think it's a question that as a board, we need to answer.
No, I, you know, I think key, key gaps in last year's budget that was approved, there was no increases for teachers or administration. Um, the budget was approved so late that we did not um, include a a unified art position at the high school because it was too hard to hire and we're not running that. But was wood technology really important for some sect of our population? I believe it was. Um, the numeracy assistant, we have looked at the data and we know that based on our our hybrid model, we're concerned about math development and and we want to the proposal is a full-time math person supporting kids in each school. Um, I mean, those are, you know, some things we've, obviously, we haven't implemented the entire budget for a lot of reasons. One is, um, you know, we're we're still in a pandemic, transportation has gone down in some of our areas, some, but so, you know, are we running? Sure. Um, and am I proud of the education that we and the and the amount of of supports and what we're doing with it? Sure. Um, can we sustain that level of zero increases for people and and reducing supports? I don't believe we can. Um, but I believe that we're, we understood the pressure. It was, it was almost a flat budget last year. Um, and now it's, it's a little bit more.
I appreciate that, Steve. Um, I really do.
Um, so I just jump in to, I mean, answering your question earlier, Norm, I mean, I, I, I understand and and actually I I think support at least in my mental model, um, separating sort of the bond payment and bond payment amount. Um, and so I I I can do that. And I I think um, that that works. I do think, you know, just as we think about what we're presenting and how we present it, I I I think Rob said it. I mean, it's gonna be hard, I think, for other people to do that, only because, you know, an increase is an increase. And I think um, we can explain it, but not everybody's going to hear the explanation. Um, and we'll vote, but that's something we can't help. But again, as a mental model, I appreciate this and I I can, I can do that. And I do think um, we're, we're to get to five percent, so just even just pulling out five percent if if we wanted to get there, um, we still have to find, you know, a hundred ninety thousand dollars in reductions to get there. And so, um, even with that mental model of pulling it out, um, those are still big numbers that we have to crack. And so I'm, um, I don't know what the right level of increase is, you know, minus the bond impact. Um, but we're, we're still, I I feel like we still have a little bit to go and and just wondering what other options. And we talked about a few of them, the PPE. Um, is there additional revenue? I mean, what, how can we make that up? Because I agree. I I think last year we did a lot of work. Um, not to cut the meat, um, but from our budget, um, you know, personnel and others, we 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 did, um, I think a good thing, you know, kind of went um, lean on some administrative costs, but I just wonder how much of that is left. It doesn't feel like there's a lot. So I'm struggling with how do we find a balance so that I I I think presenting a eight and a half percent budget increase, um, that doesn't yet include the teacher's contract is 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 going to feel very high. Um, and I I just, I wonder about the viability of that. Um, and then having this board come back to the, you know, revisit a little bit of the exercise we did last spring. I hope that's not the situation, but I just wonder if um, if there's a way to to find some additional savings there so we can um, or cost, cost reduction so we can get to a point.
Your screen's on, Steve.
Steve, your screen is on the.
Thanks.
So, um, in terms of, um, make sure I'm unmuted here. Yeah. Uh, in terms of getting to the five percent, the one eighty nine, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we've talked about a few things. Um, maybe I should just let Steve take over here in terms of the PPE and the maintenance trust and a little more with Article ten. But.
So sure. Um, and these are all things that we can come back next week on Tuesday. I've got scheduled a special leadership team meeting in the morning on Tuesday to run through different scenarios with them. Um, but areas, right now, we have a hundred thousand dollars that was factored in very appropriately by Michelle early in this process. Um, we do have a a difference now, right? We have, I was told today that by June, almost everybody, it's possible that may want, want to have a vaccine. So that may impact at least some of the PPE we need. We may have PPE left over. But you, could you reduce a hundred thousand to um, fifty thousand or something like that? Um, the, this year proposed for the maintenance trust is a very solid, very defendable, but it's a large, it's one of the largest contributions we've talked about in recent years. It's at two hundred. If we like, if we went to a hundred and fifty, that's still strong as compared to our past history. Right there, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the Article ten, we took two hundred. Um, I, we don't like to be upside down, but that still remains very strong, two hundred. Um, we hope to have, be able to fill more this year in Article ten as we have in the last couple. So if you took another fifty thousand dollars from Article ten, we fill it with fifty or a hundred, we hope at the end of the year, because who knows what's going to happen. We've just done a hundred and fifty thousand and we've maintained full program. Um, there are some programs that we didn't run this year. We'd know what happens. We'd like to do it, but maybe it, maybe they're still on hold for a couple of years and have to talk with leadership. We can bring more of that forward. I hate to get too deep into that because we just haven't had the threshold yet to talk with leadership. And certainly, we wouldn't want any staff member to find out anything to, you know, of before we have a chance to talk with them about any changes in peace. So but that's perfectly appropriate that we could bring next Tuesday. But the, we just talked about a hundred and fifty thousand um, without impacting program. Um, that is not insignificant. Um, you know, that's nineteen cents on the tax rate issue. And then there's, then then we don't get in the program.
Steve, I think we've talked about, um, can you talk about the special ed trust? Um, and maybe being able to use some of that as well?
And that, you know, I believe that, and that was the approach that I took when I tightened some of the personnel requests. Um, if we've talked with Manny, if we had to tighten the personnel request and and look at scheduling and look at tightening, but we do have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the trust that typically what I said last year, you know, in our last full year, let's try and open school and see how it goes. If not, then we can go to the trust. And to see if the scheduling or how we're, we're class dynamics are in in support. So there's also the trust there of a hundred and seventy, which, which is strong. You know, in my twelve years, we've used it twice, I think. So um, that's another piece to leverage. I mean, everything at this point is risk. Right? Everything is risk. Um, it's risk. Um, but how do we mitigate it, understanding that this is a a significant tax burden because of the revenue hole, because of the net, the retirement system and because of the bonds? It's so, I mean, you know, Michelle and I would be, you know, if if the world is better, we'd be at ninety five percent, we'd have three hundred in the maintenance trust. And we have, you know, and have, but that's not where we are. That's not the dynamic that we are.
Can I just point out something? We have to, we do have to be careful about the special ed because we have to do what's called, what's called a maintenance of effort to be able to still be able to have IDEA funds. And so what what they do do is they have us look at what we got, um, what we had in the budget for this year versus next year. They do this every year. So while there might be a little room there, I just want to throw that out there that we've never really kind of talked in the weeds about the back behind the scenes things, but there is those kind of things that we have to be careful of.
So, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Norm. Um, Rob, go ahead.
So, Michelle, you're saying that we have to think about how much we would take from that so as not to impact losing IDA money?
Correct, because you have to show that you're, you're trying to support your own programs without, you know. And so I have to look in to see if, would they consider using the trust as still being support? Um, and that I don't know because we've never done it that way. And so I just, I just want to throw something out there that, again, that we've never really talked about. Um, but it's something that um, I'll look in between now and next week, so.
Michelle, what do you predict for a fund balance, fund balance that you uh, you're anticipating? You know, because what what's wrapped around my head is we're gonna have an article that's gonna recommend changing to five percent of Article ten, which the town will vote on. So the goal, if passes, if the board approves, would to try and max, maximize that as much as we can, of course, because it'll help us down the road. What is your projection on that right now?
So I have six hundred, a little over six hundred and thirteen thousand.
And you want, so we gotta be careful because sixty thousand of that might go to early retirement, right? If all five take it, correct? We take sixty from that.
Yeah.
Well, we've got, I mean, it's fun, it's fun balance. It's funding the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars into the articles. Um, it's a food service. I don't know. It's sorry, it's food service. And so there's a lot there, but that's an encouraging number.
So is that already, what do you mean, what do you mean funding what are, so funding the article also? Okay, all right.
Hundred and twenty five right now. It said a hundred and twenty five out of fund balance, a hundred maintenance and twenty five out of tax.
Okay. So six thirteen, all right.
And it's so early to that, um, and because we are in this unfortunate situation that we're in as a society, um, I can only see it getting higher unless there's some, um, something that happens that's out of our control, like a, a expense that comes in because of some move in or something like that as an example.
Uh, Michelle, are there, um, and maybe this isn't, maybe this is a question to think about rather than put you on the spot. I just, I'm just, so if that's the case, if if, um, you know, if if we can anticipate that fund balance may grow rather than shrink, are there other things that we could um, think about anyway, allocating some of that towards? Um, you know, in this process that might pull things out of the, of the operating budget. I'm not sure, like, you know, again, last year we did computers, things that we did fund. I'm just wondering, is there any of that in the budget that we ought to, that we may want to think about, um, where where it'd be appropriate to pull it out of fund balance, um, to cover those costs early?
I think what I would see more of is items that we would do out of the maintenance trust on that schedule, being more shifted as coming out of fun, you know, out of fun balance and not being paid out of the trust. So then therefore you wouldn't have to put in as much. If that makes any sense.
No, it does.
We do want to be careful about um, what hole we might dig for next year. What, why I say that is because the higher we get on fund balance, we have to match it next year or whatever way, if we're going to go down, um, then that's already a tax increase before we even start the gate. And I know everybody knows that, but I just remind people uh, and people that are on the um, Zoom meeting that might not um, know about that, that um, that's why we don't like to go too high. Um, just because it, we don't want to fill, um, because then we have to freeze as soon as the school year is open. And we certainly don't want to do what the voters approved. We want to do what they wanted us to do, so.
I, I, I don't know if this makes sense or this is even a good idea, but I'm just thinking like we talked about the maintenance trust and maybe um, well, could we fund not all two hundred thousand dollars? Because that'd be too much. But could we fund all, if if we chose a hundred fifty as the dollar amount of the maintenance trust, you know, could we, could we fund all of that with fund balance rather than a hundred out of fund balance and fifty out of? Um, you know, um, I guess general fund dollars, for lack of a better term. Um, could we, you know, is that, is that a play? And then we're just, again, I'm looking for the ways to kind of get.
Yeah, you definitely can. And honestly, the board can decide whatever they want um, as a threshold for fund balance. And then it's Steve's and my responsibility to make sure that we meet that. So what it would, you know, depending how things go, I would hope it wouldn't get into anywhere where we have to say no to a purchase, but you know, if it gets further down in the year and it, it's just too rich based on different elements that happened, then we, we would just do that. We would put, you know, levers on there to make sure that we would get what we um, were asking for in the budget process, which we've met, I think, all but one of my um, years here. Um, and it wasn't off by very, I think it was off by less than twenty thousand dollars or something. Um, so, um, you know, the way we've been doing it has been working.
And and I don't, I mean, I guess I I'm also um, conscious that I don't want to put too much pressure on on fund balance number, especially since we're, you know, we're still only in um, December of our fiscal year. And, you know, while we think it may grow, you know, as you remind us, Michelle, we don't really know. And so I would also hate the budget with too much, um, I guess, too liberal of a view of what fund balance might be. And then, you know, get kind of caught up at the end. So um, there is a balance there, but I just, but hearing you say that it might grow gives me a little bit of hope that maybe we can.
Yeah, I mean, a prime example is like, um, you know, we're still waiting for Chromebooks. You know, we got the, you know, supplemental grant fund to, you know, to the November statement doesn't reflect some of the adjustments that I did because the grant came in in December. It didn't come in in November. So, you know, there's a little bit there. And if we get, I'm hoping we get Chromebooks in the next you know, few days so that we can pay for it and receive it before December thirty, because then I could shift that into the grant. Um, so again, those are just avenues that unfortunately, it's a little bit too early for me to say, but in a couple of weeks, I'll know more about that because we'll be on, we'll be beyond the day. So I I'm being optimistic of uh, that more will come in and that we can pay for before that date.
Most of the time, we've, we funded fund balance out, sorry, we funded the maintenance trust out of fund. It wasn't until recently, we put some of that in the budget.
A question that's been commonly asked me, and I spoke to Rob about, about this, if there's a savings with incorporating V-LASC. And I've, I've, I've been asked that multiple times. It's been brought up in meetings before. Um, I I don't have an answer for that. And I don't know if 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 Rob, did you have, I know we talked about it. You're on my speed dial right now. Um, and your, and your research, do you see if there's any way of incorporating that? You know, there's something we can apply that to in order that gives us a little bit of a pressure breaker.
Well, let me, um, Steve, you can help me out here, but let me give a quick recap of what V-LASC is and how it normally operates. So V-LASC is a, is a charter school and students can sign up to take all of their high school education with them, or they can sign up to take a course with them. The typical practice at Hopkinton High School is that students sign up to take a course. And sometimes it's something that they're interested in, perhaps it's sometimes they would prefer not to take uh, French or Spanish. They want to take Latin, so they do that through V-LASC. Um, or they need a course to get to a certain, you know, so they can take a certain math class or, you know, whatever it happens to be. But it tends to be students that are taking singleton courses that are gaps in their own transcripts. Um, so it helps students in that way. And just to be clear about what V-LASC is, and it really truly is an independent study. So V-LASC purchases a curriculum. They don't necessarily write the curriculum. Students uh, subscribe to that curriculum. They do the work. They have an instructor that they work with who might help them to answer questions. Uh, and then, you know, the instructor helps with the assessment process and they they do that assessment process, you know. There's a conversation to make sure that you've met these competencies. In order to to save money with V-LASC, we would have to, I believe, and Steve, you can chime in here, to say, you know what? We're gonna do freshman English. You're not going to take it at Hopkinton High School. You're all going to be doing it on V-LASC. Um, you know, that would be a major shift in the way that business is done. I mean, I think that that the Virtual Learning Academy definitely has its place for certain students. I'm not sure that that's something that uh, the town of Hopkinton is ready to switch to. the town of Hopkinton is ready to switch to. You know, I had a conversation with somebody today from the New Hampshire School Funding Group out of Carcy School. And they were asking me about, you know, projecting in the future. Do I think education is going to change post-COVID? Probably. I think everything is going to change post-COVID, how business is done, lots of things. But we don't know what that's going to be, right? But I mean, I would imagine educational models will shift somewhat. But that would be the shift in order to save money to do that. But, you know, as in Steve and I, part of that would mean that you have a reduction and then you've got a four-fifth or a three-fifth teacher who might be very good and says, well, you know what? I can't survive in life on this. So there's a double edged sword there between saving the money and keeping good staff.
Rob, I think the only addition I would say probably V-LAC has probably prevented us from growing in certain, you know, because it does increase the offerings. And maybe, you know, we have honorary, so I think it serves a purpose, but you're right. If you're talking about significant savings, Rob just described it very well. You're talking about reducing staff and passing it on and forcing kids or compelling kids to take it virtually. And we've used it as a choice, as an enhancement, not as a replacement. And, and we think that model's worked. And I don't know of many schools that have reduced staff and then required courses to V-LAC, they use it as a supplemental and an enhancement.
I appreciate that.
And that may put significant, I mean, if, if schools were to start doing that, and I don't want to speak for V-LAC, I think that would put incredible pressure on their system. You know, that would mean them expanding their staff and how they do business, so.
Well, that was a question I was, I was going to ask, Rob, you or Steve, like, if, if we chose or we wanted this board was interested in that, just, you know, to say we were interested in shifting more to V-LAC, are we guaranteed slots? Or is it was a sort of like a first come, first served model? So if we decided to do it, are we guaranteed our students would actually get into those classes?
So if you go on V-LAC right now, there are waiting lists and they're fairly backed up. There are courses that are closed because there's only so many instructors to so many students. They're in the process of, you know, expanding their fleet of instructors. So yeah, no, it's not a guarantee. There needs to be an instructor, there needs to be an opening.
Rob, thank you for that answer.
So it sounds like down the road, that could be something that, you know, a board could investigate, but it would probably have to be some sort of, you know, V-LAC would probably have to be offering that to school districts as a way to be able to reduce staff, because again, if we reduce staff, you don't get into V-LAC, then you're, you're sort of, you're left, you're left without any options. And so it feels like it would have to be more of a offering that they would give the districts in order to make those choices. It sounds like making that on our own would be very risky.
Right. You know, I think if we, this is drifting into a whole other educational philosophy discussion at the moment, but if you look at the paper today and what Southern New Hampshire University announced in having their tuition and how they're going about doing that, they're also changing their educational model in order to make that financially possible. So. I mean, I think a lot of things are going to be on the table in the future, but the future is relatively uncertain at this December 17th moment.
Rob, do you know, do, how much, or Steve might know this, how much do we pay for V-LAC?
V-LAC is, is, is no bit, no fee to the schools.
Really? Okay.
It's, they get a certain amount from the state per enrollee, which is higher actually than the adequacy aid that we get. Charter schools get a little bit more than we do.
So do our kids count as like point one kid if they're taking one class, or do they count as a full kid?
My suspicion is, is there's a percentage by course that, and they ask for reimbursement by, I don't, I don't think their model could, because a significant part of their model is supporting schools with singletons and with courses we can't offer. The first V-LAC course we ever did was a biology course where someone wanted to do online dissection. And so that was when we started a long time ago.
All right, thanks.
So I guess, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, maybe I'm wondering from Andrea and Seth, you know, where are you guys in terms of looking at the budget? You know, we've kind of gone around, you know, 5% reducing by a couple hundred thousand. I'm just sort of curious what, you know, what you guys are thinking. Norm, Rob and I have talked a lot. Sorry about that. But just sort of curious, that, that could probably help us all. And then Steve sort of figure out how to navigate the next step.
Yeah, you know, I'm willing to work towards the 5%. You know, we went through this process not very long ago and wrung our hands about all these things and maintained all these things. And now we're back saying we're going to cut again. At least as I've learned about this budget, I am firmly in the camp that the bond should not count towards what we're doing. The, the community made a decision. And that was a good decision, but it's the decision the community made to say, okay, on the back of that decision, we're going to go ahead and cut teachers is just something I'm not going to support. So that brings us to, well, how much is reasonable, which is why I was interested in this required versus necessary, because it strikes me that we need to, we as the community need to understand that we are funding an enterprise, like all enterprises, that have costs that go up each and every year. And we have to understand that. And that's why most of it falls into that required bucket. So I think it's, I think it's hard to get to the 5% and I wouldn't be in favor of taking our efforts to go beyond the 5% unless the town comes back and says, we're not going to do it, then we have no choice. But as where we're headed, the 5% to me is probably more than I want to cut, but I'm willing to, to try to see if we can find that money to, to get there.
Sorry, I can unmute myself. Um. Yeah, I, I appreciate pulling out the bond as well. I think that, that makes complete sense. I almost wish that we could, you know, have kept it as a separate thing, just so that folks could visualize it a little bit more easily. But I understand why we, why we can't do that for accounting purposes. Um. Yeah, I, I agree with Seth. I think everything does come with a cost. I am, I am eternally frustrated with the downshifting of costs and responsibilities from the state level onto municipalities, onto towns like ours. But if we were to just keep cutting, I mean, eventually there's, there's nothing more to cut. I think we're also having to recognize that while we're in a pandemic right now, we have a lot of rebuilding that will need to be done as, as best we've done. You know, projections look like the, the road out of this is two to three years to get kiddos back on track. Because, you know, we've, we've all done our best, but when you are operating in a trauma, it's really hard to learn. So I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the breakdown. I think it would be helpful, you know, for me, it would be helpful to see a few more specifics. I'm very visual. And so being able to really, it was awful and helpful last year when we really saw that like breakdown. I don't hurt, like personally, I don't love the tier system, but I would be interested in maybe like, I don't know, suggestions at every one of those, the 5%, 4% and 3%. You know, plus bond levels. I think that, that could be helpful. And I guess I just have other questions, you know, I just wonder how much flexibility do we have around our transportation costs? You know, how much flexibility do we have around negotiating our out of district tuition costs? I'm just really trying to, I think we've come up with a few creative ideas, you know, funding the CIP with fund balance rather than separately. And so I guess I'm just looking for other, if there are any other avenues or options or things that we can, we can touch on. So that's where, that's where I'm at right now.
So how do, and, and then maybe just, I mean, I like Andrea's idea of rather than tiers, you know, how, how do we, if, if there were going to be those reductions to the 3%, 4%, like where, where might those come from? I, I think it's a useful exercise. We're going to be asked, we're going to be asked those questions. I think normally asked those questions at the Budget Committee. And so having, having, you know, some answers, they're not all the answers, but having some would probably be helpful because I do think we'll get asked those questions. And so maybe, maybe having those conversations and wrestling with some of those would be helpful. And I'm not quite sure, Steve, how you would do that. And my assumption is that would come out of, most likely come out of personnel costs, because again, I, I, you know, I'm not sure where else we would find them unless there's some other creative means. But my assumption is that you and your leadership team have looked at some of those, you know, other ideas and creative ideas. And you presented a budget, which probably has encompassed some of those. But I guess, is that something, Steve, that you think you and your leadership, leadership team could produce and that whether or not we act on it, it would at least give us information to provide when we get asked those questions?
Absolutely. No, you're right. I think those questions, you have to have the what if questions and, you know, it would be, you know, we'll pull some of the levers on each side, but we will. We've always, you know, whether it's tiers or thresholds, whatever we've done, we always will try to mitigate impact to students, right? You know, and all that, what we do. But no, I think, I think that's a, a good step heading into the 2022, maybe? Is it the 2022?
What I would like to see, if the board's okay with, is basically moving pieces. I'd like to be able to see, like, give the unreserved fund balance, this is what's going to go to what, this is what's going to go to what, this is what's going to go to what, is what I'd like to see. And then I'd like to be able to see the missing pieces from Article 10, what we plan to take in from there and how that's going to be applied to everything. So kind of gives, I, I agree with Andrea, give us kind of an overview of where everything's coming from and kind of map it out. So we're able to be able to answer where, where we're taking certain numbers from. Is that, is that clear, Steve?
I think so.
Michelle, Michelle would probably understand. Do you understand what I'm talking about, Michelle? Okay, great. Okay. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Right. Can I ask a, a general question of the board? So assuming that the September 22nd, we want to make a decision so we can all move forward with this. I guess what I'm hearing is, is that people are comfortable of getting to that approximate 5% increase number. And that these other questions about developing the big scary list, which we'll just call it that, because that's what it was last year, is about answering the public's questions about what it would mean if, if things were to go below that. But I'm just sort of like going to, you know, I'd hate to get to next Tuesday, like, well, you know, I'm not so sure. And then now we're into January 7th. Are we all fairly confident that that's an acceptable scenario to be in? That we can forge forward with? And now are we crafting how to put this out to the community and to explain our decision? Does that make sense? I'm not asking people to commit, but I'm just sort of, you know, making sure that we're on the same page and we don't set ourselves up for surprises next Tuesday.
I think I'm on the same chapter as you. I don't know if I'm on the same page. No, because I, I generally, I think the answer is yes. I generally, I think so. And I, I, I think it's a big number and I'm, but I understand it also. It's a big number and I understand the consequences, pros and cons, I get it. And I do think, you know, if, if Steve comes back with, you know, ideas or, or, you know, part of the big scary list that we all could stretch and say that it's doable to get, you know, because I don't know what they are. So again, this is all hypothetical. Like I would entertain it in order to, you know, in order to reduce the increase if we can. So I'm not, my heart isn't set on 5%. If, if we're able to move lower than that without, you know, without doing damage to the education system, then I'm, I don't want to say I'm not open to that or would dismiss it. So. So I guess that's the right chapter. And we'll just see, you know, next Tuesday when we get together, like what those other items are. And because if we can potentially get below that 189 number, I think that's what it was, like, I think that would be good and probably behoove us to do, because we have to remember that those numbers don't include a teacher's contract. And so that, so anyway, there's, there's that cost also that will be added into here. So even if we reduce a little bit, we're, we're likely to see additional costs. That again, I, I don't want to say we're cutting here to pay for our teachers who, you know, we need. But I think it all, and it all, it's all in the wash. It all comes out of the same pocket. So it's, that was a long rambling answer, but that's, that's where I think I am right now.
I think that's, I think that's fair. Makes sense. Our bookmarks are, you know, we are in the same chapter.
I think I've got the marching orders. Does that work for everybody? And Norm, I can, you know, show you how the, we're present, presented before to make sure that it meets your needs, but we can work on that for Tuesday, December 22nd.
At 5:30.
At 5:30.
So I'm just looking at the agenda and I think we've, we spilled right into the items for board discussion. And so I'm just looking under the, under the operating budget to see if there's anything else in that list that Steve, you, you want to cover with us tonight that we already haven't covered.
No, we did the follow up. I've got questions. I do understand the deliverables for the, we'll, we'll stick with the 22nd right now. And we won't necessarily talk about January 7th. And we've got the schedule because I think, you know, we've got a presentation, Norm's got a presentation of the Budget Committee, 13th, January 13th. And Michelle's got some work to do. The Budget Bulletin will include the programmatic budget by building, the programmatic budget in general, as well as the big spreadsheet. We think we're going to provide more information than we've had in a while. So I think we're ready.
The only question I had that just popped into my head is just around adequacy. And I think, I don't remember when we talked about it. Or, I don't know, there was a conversation of, I'm just curious if there's any additional news or any news out of the state. Because I had heard from somebody else too, there's been conversations around, you know, the state finding a way to match the adequacy amount from last year. And Steve, I just don't know if you've heard any scuttlebutt about that.
The only I've heard is that there was going to be a bill filed right after the new legislature seats doing that.
Okay.
Whether it'll pass, but I think Dave, Representative Luna was going to join that and submit that bill. Has he done the LSR? I can find out by next Tuesday, see where it's at.
All right. Is everybody all set to move forward on the next topic? All right. So the next topic is operating and learning in a global pandemic. I often comment that I love that title. Um. So Steve, I'm going to hand it over to you. And I think, and I, I, I know that we had talked, Stephen, you and I talked earlier about potentially inviting Mr. Croze to join us at some point, just to talk about the changes over at Harold Martin as sort of a, to help us understand it. And just as an education item, would that fall into this, this part?
Yes, absolutely. And Bill was on, I don't know if he's going to raise, oh, there he is, he raised his hand. Love it, loving that. So, but while Bill gets comfortable, we'll just start real quick with the calendar. So there was a, there was a question about looking, is it feasible or will the impact be of extending the December break and then moving around the weeks? And leadership team and I spent some time, share a screen, boom, boom. You see that at all? Is that a memo now? So just a couple of things, I get some feedback from various constituencies throughout the district as well as the leadership. One of the concerns, if we extend the break, that would reduce pay for hourly workers, because we pay as they work. And they have personal budgets on a, on a certain calendar. Now, you could say, well, it's going to be replaced in June, but some, many of our hourly workers have a, have start a summer job or a second job at that time. So it might not be apples to apples. Thanks to Chris, I appreciate his reminder that the facility project is very tightly scheduled to finish by September 1, getting, or you know, pretty close to September 1 to getting ready for school. One of the things that we talk about a lot at the, the executive board of the facility work is getting the high school ready for an abatement in the science labs for asbestos. And the best time right now is the two weeks right before the end of school gets out and Chris will work on changing labs and things like that. But if we move that a week, I really do believe that that could put in jeopardy our ability to finish the, that project and the Harold Martin project, if you will. You know, but I think Harold probably be okay, but the high school labs would be a significant hit. I think Rob brought this up, end of June, weather, you know, temperatures at the end of June can be a struggle. It's real. And depending where we are with fans and all that stuff. We also, there's some national and state testing dates, especially the national date around AP tests. We lose a week of instruction around AP tests, which we already, I think, we're already behind compared to other parts of the country. And then one thing we, we hope if things get back to normal, one of the things that used to disrupt the end of, of the secondary level is youngsters going off to camps and also our own summer programs. So there's a lot of tent. So there's a lot of tentacles about why, you know, it may not be the best choice. I understand and I would love to guarantee all that, that we'd get another week of in-person because that is so valuable. But with all these pieces, I think it would be really pushing the envelope to, to make that kind of calendar, calendar shift right now. So I'm not recommending, because of all these, I'm not recommending that we add a week, even though people certainly had feedback about not having a snow day today. So I understand the, the need for winter days. But I think coming back on the fourth and continuing for the facility project, for the hourly workers, for the national testing dates and everything else, I think that probably situates me in that, that category versus a week break.
Any, any questions for Steve? I appreciate you and your leadership team diving into this. And it was a good creative idea. So appreciate that.
Yeah, I was just going to echo the same. I think it was really, this memo, I found it really eye opening. I hadn't considered some of those things and especially like our hourly workers. Right now, taking away more wages from folks is definitely not what I would be in favor of doing. So thank you, Steve, very much and the leadership team for looking at that.
No, I appreciated the idea. I really did because, you know, once we looked at it, so I was happy to do it. And I've always appreciate the support of the team. This is really their work. I get to be the spokesperson. Everybody okay? I'm just going to just to, so a couple of things, each Friday, I've been reporting where we are. Usually telling about the board's schedule, like if there's a meeting on Saturday or next week. But in, in one of the comments of, of the community and I talked to the nurses, talked to leadership team, we'll start reporting out the, the number of adults and the number of students. A lot of community members would like to make that distinction. So currently, we have four students with confirmed positives in district, but two will be off this weekend. We don't, and we have two staff members currently with, with district wide positive cases. And one staff member, not included, two are, are positive, just recent positives. And one staff member will be coming off this weekend after the days. So that's our current update on where we are in confirmed cases in district. And I'll write that in an email to the community tomorrow, as I've been doing for a while. And I'm going to, I think now just a status, so Bill can provide a status report on Harold Martin and the education model. There he is.
Hey, Bill. Thanks for joining us.
You bet. Let me turn on a little light here. Thanks for having me. I just came in from snow blowing and, and shoveling. We've got a lot here in my town. So I'll be probably going back out after this. So obviously we've had some time to look at remote learning at all the schools. And we know we're going to do it probably anyway until mid-January. So, you know, we want to look at what we do and try to make it as positive, as good as, as we can. Obviously, if it ain't broke, you don't fix it too. So we always keep that in mind. I certainly got some feedback today, as I know the board did, talked to some people on the phone and all very respectful conversations and emails, concern about diminishing academic time in exchange for maybe live specials, a little bit of planning time for, for teachers. I would offer as the general statement that sometimes less is more. It isn't always, sometimes less is less, but I, I think less can be more if you play your cards right. So what we talked about, and I put out actually yesterday, yeah, Friday, actually in the Sunday blast. No, it was yesterday, actually, I think, is we're going to start with some live specials or unified arts. And that could happen whether or not we tweak the schedule, but we thought, you know, we'd like to, to see, have kids see, not just taped asynchronous lessons from specialists. And they, they're very excited to do it and they want to start tomorrow to do that. So we're going to get that going no matter what, what happens, I think. But kids will have a choice. They have a choice of either the live classes or they can also go onto Seesaw, one of our, our programs, platforms and do, with links there, do some asynchronous activities within the same areas as well. We also, I think we want to be careful about screen time. And this, I, I believe is really important for little guys, especially, you know, kids ages five to eight or nine. You know, we're pushing and it's probably, probably okay to push the limit a little bit. This is a pandemic and we have to do a remote learning, but we'd really like to limit it to about two hours of live per day, maybe another hour or so of asynchronous, asynchronous meaning not face to face with someone. We all know, like these board meetings, how tiring it can be if you're on, you know, for too long. And little guy, you know, six-year-old, seven-year-old really shouldn't be having that much screen time, you know, beyond say two hours. I mean, it's flexible and no one's counting minutes too much, but I think it's important to be somewhere along that, that range. I believe a lot in debriefing a day, no matter what age you are. So I, I really insist on having some sort of either closing circle, as we call it in responsive classroom language, or a wrap-up. So that's really important. Office hours will continue, really could be five days a week on that. What we are finding though, that a lot of teachers are ready for office hours, you know, meaning they keep their, their screen open, but they're not getting a lot of feedback. So we'd like parents probably just to make an appointment, which might be more efficient. But we want to continue that sort of support all the time. And of course, we have a number of instructional assistants that do that sort of work as well, that are already attached to certain grade levels. And we also, you know, one thing to emphasize too, that I want to talk about, I heard from teachers a lot, is flexibility. Obviously, you know, we'd like parents to be flexible with us, but we also have to be flexible with parents. As many parents who contact me or teachers about, you know, rigorous live instruction, I have just as many parents who are still pretty frustrated with remote learning, whether it's, you know, a technology issue or a time issue or, or just their own inability to, to teach, because you know, that's not really what they signed up for. So that flexibility has to happen. And that's, I've been reminded by teachers of that, really the parent perspective, almost more from teachers than, than from parents. So let me try to explain some of this to it. I think the main issue that people had was we wanted to make Monday and Thursday, Monday through Thursday, a very tight academic, in terms of, by academics, I mean literacy and numeracy period, where Friday would still be morning meeting first thing, because we want that to happen five days a week. But then some flexibility on Fridays for teachers to do some planning. A lot of them have to go back frankly into the building and, because we're still, a lot, there's a lot of paper going on at Harold Martin still. Paper in the bins that we put the paper in. And really every hour of synchronous, every hour of synchronous learning is probably an hour of planning. We have to keep that in mind as well. So I've watched with great interest the work of Meredith Post and Kathy Pepper, our remote teachers. To be honest, we've pretty much adopted their schedule, at least as it stands now, you know, with some flexibility. You know, where they really do the same sort of thing, Monday through Thursday, you know, tight, eight to noon, lots of synchronous, two, three hours of synchronous, plenty of activities in the afternoon and then specials on Friday. And specials can take a long time. You know, they, they can be very fun, but very time consuming. So one advantage of putting specials on a particular day is it makes the rest of the week, I think, you know, more tighter for, for academics. So chunking that really helps. The planning time really helps teachers do a better job all the way through the week as well. Special ed services, reading services, math services will still occur five days a week. And frankly, as I talked to some interventionists, they do a lot of their work on Friday. So as well as our counselor and other things. So that'll still happen. We'll also try to plan as many meetings as possible on, on Friday too, to maximize the rest of the week. And teachers will have flexibility on Friday too. If they want to do a grade level get-together, they have that flexibility on Friday as well. So that's the plan. You know, I, to use the word, overuse the word flexibility, I think we're flexible. And we want to, you know, try this for a while and see how it works. You know, we've heard great feedback on school board meetings, frankly, from both Meredith and Kathy's classes. And there's a reason for that, I think, because I think it's a well-organized, you know, plan. You know, there's always this conundrum or continuum even of flexibility for teachers and then clarity and consistency. And we try to find that, that mix. We want everything to be clear, you know, through the grade levels. But we also want to make sure teachers have enough flexibility. They can use their own talents and, and abilities to make it work. So I hope that helps a little bit. Again, I, we're flexible and I, I love to hear the feedback from, from parents. It is all over the place a little bit on this type of thing, as everything is in the pandemic. But I think it's important that we, we listen and I know the board listens as well. So, so that's my, that's my little talk on that. If you have questions, be glad to answer them.
Thanks, Bill. That was helpful. Some questions, Norm? Sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. So the balance, the balance between the students. So if your, if your child was in person and now they're remote, and if you have a student that was remote at all times, were they receiving the same amount of, you know, numeracy and literacy all at the same time? Like was it balanced that they were both, both getting it equally?
To be perfectly honest, I can't say they were. I think remote teachers, remote kids probably got more. And probably are getting more now in terms of the actual content. It's kind of the conundrum the high school is under too. Where if you go remote, you have, you know, four, five, whatever days of, of content. In our case, it might be a little more skills than content. When it's a hybrid situation, you're trading a little bit of that, that content for FaceTime. With the, I mean, I think we're probably still better off at our level being as much FaceTime as we can, I mean, in-person FaceTime. But I, from a curriculum standpoint, I would say the remote teachers probably were moving faster. You know, again, because they saw them every day. And now, and one thing I hadn't mentioned is we also combine Team A and Team B. So every day, teachers are seeing both teams. So it's not like Monday is, well, Tuesday is, and Thursday are Team A and Wednesday and Friday are Team B. Now it's both teams every day under the remote. I didn't, I didn't see any reason why we needed to, to split the teams up in a remote setting.
Does this balance it now? Is each, each group kind of like equal now if we change this new schedule? And it's only from my understanding, it would only be this Friday and then two other Fridays, right? And it would be just three weeks until this board decides the next step?
Fair enough. Yeah, I think you're right. Are they the same?
They would be balanced, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I, I'd have to, I'd probably argue that the remote, the two remote classrooms are maybe curriculum-wise, probably a little ahead. Again, what you trade is the, the face to face. That was always the, the conundrum we were under, I think.
So one, one thing that struck me about this, and I, you know, and I think as most people know, or maybe you don't. So I have a child at HMS who has done full remote from the beginning. And one thing that struck me about this change opposed to other changes that we've implemented is that we've, this is how our remote classes have been going for the past three and a half months. And so it, it isn't something that we're necessarily like trying out brand new and don't know how it will go. It's something that we've been doing now for months and months with a, you know, a fairly large subset of kids, K through three. And I've had the chance, you know, to talk to our remote teachers as well. And I would echo what, kind of what Bill said is that, you know, even though sort of on paper, it looks like the kids might not be getting as much time, there's a lot, you know, you don't have the transitions between classes. You don't have the herding of cats that you do when, when you're face to face. It is really, when you are there for math instruction, you're really doing, you know, 30 minutes hardcore math instruction. You know, as hardcore as like second graders and third graders can get. And, you know, just, just from a remote parent's perspective, it has been helpful. It's been a helpful, and I would not say that the kids that I've kind of seen through the, the screen have fallen behind really at, at all. And it's a, it's a real variety of kids. I also think that there's a, a real value and a value judgment in helping to prioritize our unified arts. You know, because I think it's not, you know, just music or just PE or just art. You know, there's always a literacy component in those things and there's a math component in those things. And these are also, you know, for as much as we would hope that kids would love math and literature, some kids are at school for PE and, you know, some kids are now like ending the week with Mr. Pierog's 30-minute music videos are amazing and super fun. So I think that there's also, I know we pride ourselves on being a district that has supported the arts. And I think that this is part of it as well. And if we end up pushing our unified arts off to a time where not as many kids, either they're, they're not going to be able to engage with them or they might just be burnt out by the time that they're, it's time for them. I think that we would probably end up seeing less kids engaging with them. So that's just my, just a different perspective.
And it's a, it's a great, it's a great point, Andrea, but I, I guess that's one thing I just wrap around my head real quick. Are we still reaching the students that maybe need a little more guidance and reading and got into math? You know, and I, I agree with Andrea on, on some of her points. I just want to make sure that, you know, there, there's some students that really need that extra day, Bill, and a little more math. And I'm sure your team is able to identify them or have some type of guidance that says, you know what? We can find a solution to meet with them because there's some students that need that extra help in guidance. Do you know what I'm saying? Identifying a student at a younger age, of course, is, is better for the district, right? I mean, we, we want to be able to catch them while they're younger. We want to be able to identify immediately and give them the assistance. It's three weeks, you know, and we can reevaluate what's going to happen moving forward. In those three weeks, are we looking at potentially any, any, how come you think of, you know, a kid getting behind or anything? That, that's just my concern right there. I don't think so, but that, you know better than I do.
Sure. If there's something I know about our teachers, they advocate for their kids really well. And because I hear it, if there's a, if there's an issue with instructional time or more likely a specific student that just needs more, we're going to, we're going to give them more any way we can. It might be on that Friday. You know, they might already be doing it on Friday with a list cannon or, you know, a Bonnie McAuliffe or some counseling with Jackie Kleiner. You know, we, we do, it, one thing, it's interesting, we found is that some intervention work may actually be better. We don't know this for sure and there's no hard data, but anecdotally, without a mask, over a screen, some education is actually better. Most isn't. But I think if you're doing a half-hour intensive intervention on, on phonics, you know, to see the kid's face, to see the teacher's face, where we just can't really do that in person. That's one thing we've learned, as Rob was saying earlier tonight, that, that may be one thing we learn about education in a pandemic. It's going to be very interesting to brief this summer and into the fall, I think, on, on what is working better and maybe not, not as well. The other thing I want to mention too, I, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I liked how you said you, you took an existing plan of what you guys have been using for remote. Saw that it's working and now you're kind of seeing how you can kind of implement it a little bit, but also with guidance of saying, hey, we're still looking out for these students if they need it and, and looking at that path. So.
And we, I wanted to mention, we, I don't think I mentioned this, maybe I did. We have a remote learning committee. Of course, there's a committee for everything, but that's something that's really important to this process because everything's so different for us. And it's, it's a broad cross-section, both Meredith and Pepper, Kathy Pepper, Pepper's really her name, are part of that. And it's, it's great discussion. But I'll tell you right now, if, if things aren't working, if we need to tweak it, you know, we will, we'll do it. We have to do it.
Any, any additional questions for Bill? Bill, I just want to thank you for, for, for coming in and joining us out from the snow. I know it must've been hard to pull you away from the shoveling, but.
Really hard, yeah. It was a nice break, Jim.
But we do appreciate you coming in because we, we did, I think each of us probably got a couple of questions. And I think your explanation was very good. And so I'm sure not just the board, but other people appreciate it. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I can demote you.
Kamelun's going to demote you now, Bill. I apologize.
Back to the shoveling. Thank you.
The last piece is eight, we're at 87.1, which is the daily average cases per 100,000 in Merrimack County, which is obviously tipping point. We've been there for a little while. It hasn't changed. We'll continue to update the board and where we're at. Everybody okay?
Can I ask one quick question? Well, I'm going to ask it. So Steve, I was wondering, I know that we've switched to remote for a while and I know that we were working on like possible scheduling or, or a change to the educational model at the middle high school as far as like synchronous teaching and learning goes. Is that still something that's, that's underway or have we like paused that for a little while? I just wanted to know if there's any updates there.
They had a subcommittee as well, like Bill spoke, the subcommittee is met, the, the equipment has been dispersed. They were actually ready to go, I think, this week for the pilot. But yes, all, all systems are go. But yes, all, all systems are go with, with teachers excited to give it a shot in the equipment that Matt's providing.
Once we return, whenever that is. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Steve, the only, it's probably not, it's not for today, but we had talked on, I wanted to say Thursday, but it was really Saturday morning when we made the decision on sports that we would, we would try to, you know, you, Chris and Dan and whoever else, excuse me, would, would think about, you know, what goes into like a go-no-go decision as we get closer to the. And so I, it was just wondering if you've had that. And if that's something we'll get, you know, maybe at our next meeting or at some point, I guess, before a decision is made, just so we can think about what that might look like.
Yeah, so Dan and Amy Cook, our nurse started, I met with the nurses on Tuesday. They're bringing, I'm meeting with the nurses now every Tuesday, just, just to run through some questions. So they, yes, the, the changes to the athletic co-crea agreement are, are underway. The no-go, go, looking at quarantining and whether it's one case, two cases, or student population as a whole. So yes, that work has started. Happy to bring something back next Tuesday. I, I didn't think it was for this meeting, so if, if you intended it to have it at this meeting, then that's on me. I'm good. But Dan and, and that work has absolutely begun and happy to bring what we have next Tuesday.
No, that's perfect. And at least I can only speak for myself. I mean, I wasn't expecting a finished product. And so even work in progress updates, sort of, you know, what the thinking is would just be great. So we're, I guess we're informed and then the community, you know, kind of understands what you guys are thinking in terms of the season and what to expect. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, happy to. We'll update next week on all components that were very clearly articulated on Saturday. Happy to do that.
All right. Before we move on, any other thoughts or questions or comments on operating and learning in a global pandemic? And if not, we'll move under personnel and I'll hand it over to you, Steve.
Sure. I, I think there was the memo, just where we are in Schedule B, trying to stay up on Schedule B. Math team is working, which we like remotely. They are doing meets and all that fun stuff. Bridget Gaddy for Coral Director. I did write in board notes, so typically there are two senior class advisors because those duties are, are, as Rob can attest, I think are exhaustive. So with this year, we only had one, so it is absolutely fair to have, because Kate's now going to be handling all those responsibilities by herself. She'll still get the second half of the stipend, if you will. A Nordic assistant coach, which we think is good, and a JV basketball coach, Kate. So we'll continue to, as best we can to keep updating on the Schedule B nominations to stay ahead of it. I appreciate the leadership team's support in, in, in all the business office. So those are coming forward.
Any questions on Schedule B? All right. And early retirement, Steve?
Sure. And tonight, and when typically we do it at the last meeting, I mean, this is kind of a rhythm. So after, we've, we've talked about the finance committee, we've talked a little bit about the board meeting. And just to articulate the process, by March, sorry, by November 15th, they have to submit their applicant request. The board by January 15th has to grant, and then by April for, or not grant, and by April 1st, they have to accept or not accept. This process is very much governed by the CBA, including the superintendent is required to, within 10 days, and receipt of a request is to reply. Acknowledgement of the receipt. And then, which I think I finally understand based on this year, I have to notify simultaneously the response to those requests. And so the board, this is an, an approval of the board. This does not, however, obligate any of the five people that are on the agenda to take it. So, and, but this is the process where it does become public, at least just the request piece tonight. And then I will notify the five, the results of the board vote tonight via email simultaneously, or pretty close to simultaneously. And then it's, the ball's in their court to accept or not. So tonight, the action item is Pam Moscow, social studies teacher, middle and high schools. Diana Moore, an English teacher, middle and high schools. Jim Bizar, math teacher, Hopkinton High School. Sue Roberts, math teacher, Hopkins Middle School and High School. Sorry for that one. And Trish Roberts, elementary teacher, Maple Street School. Again, this is just still option for them. This is a process that we do have people who, based on changes to their personal situations, put it off, you know, do not accept. And so, but that's where, that's the action item tonight. Everybody okay?
No, I have a question. I just only wanted to say it to you when you said that. So my, my, my question is, is let's say three out of five accept. What's the turnaround on this board for us to offer more? Can we do that? So it's three out of five, get back early. You know, we're still trying to look at the outlook, you know, of capitalizing potentially. What is a timetable for us to do that?
So the, the board has the option to reopen early retirement. I think it's only happened once that we reopened it in the spring. So, and that can happen, you could, you could reopen it anytime. So there, up to now, it's been driven by the contract, but the board can reopen. Usually, to be honest, I, I seek HEA leadership support and they, there's no reason why not to, because all it does is provide options for their membership. So, yeah, I mean, we've opened, we opened it once, Michelle, I think in May. I think we had some budget issues and what happened, and we just wanted to see if there was a way to voluntarily change some budgets. You know, some personnel versus reduction enforcement, and it did happen.
Is this the most we ever offered?
In my time. We've done four before, though.
So this is the most the district's ever done. Okay, that's good to know.
Great. Any other questions? And this is an action item tonight, as long as everybody's ready for it. All right. Next up is school calendar, or 2020, 2021's calendar, anyway.
Yeah, I get that. Is that the right year? Yeah. No, it's a wrong year?
I think it's the wrong year. Wouldn't it be?
Oh, sorry about that.
2122. It's all right. We don't want to.
The other one should have been 2122. I was a year behind. I don't want to leave this year, Jim. We just don't want to leave. So 2021 to 2022.
Who doesn't want to leave this year?
I know. It is in the packets. The, we've gone through it a couple of times. The only nuance in this one that is, is different, we've talked about, is the, the 30 students that are connected to the regional technical program. We try to align as much as we can with Concord. And this calendar supports the president's week of February 21st versus the second week. I have not heard back if there's any changes in Concord. If the board was so concerned about it, because we are now having a meeting on December 22nd, we could still approve on the 22nd and still meet the contract obligation. And I could do the agenda item correctly if you wanted to do that. Or you could approve tonight, and we have, with union support and understanding, revised the calendar post, you know, January 1st. Not usually too late in the year because people start planning. It's really the board's pleasure.
So Steve, this is the first time that Concord's done this, right? Because we've always been the last week after, after Massachusetts week and.
It's the, it's, they, the, once before, they've submitted a draft with it, and then it was noticed. And actually, the state calendar says take, the state recommended calendar is the typical week that we take. So yes, this is the first time, Rob, that it would be gone through adoption, that they are taking the president's week as the February week. And I, everybody's just been a little, you know, preoccupied, so I haven't received. But I'm happy to, if you want to table it tonight, happy to reach out to Superintendent Murphy and make sure this is what's going to be happening and understand the why. I haven't, I don't understand the why the change from the Concord perspective. I'm happy to do that.
I mean, I would just, I don't know, speak for myself. There's a big difference being on vacation the week after. Things are quiet. There's lots of opportunity. It's a lot better. So if, if we can just make sure, I mean.
Why don't we table it tonight and have, put it on the agenda, and we still meet our contractual obligation for the 22nd? And I'll, I'll follow up one more time just to see what, what the why and where we're at. I'm happy to do that, and I'll feel better about having the right agenda items.
Convince them not to do it.
I will try. That's what happened before. It wasn't me, though, but someone did. All right, so we'll table this?
Yeah, I think that's, unless there's an objection, but I'm not hearing one. So it feels, if we have time, we can double check and make sure. That sounds good. All right. And then financial?
Sure. The first one is really very much appreciate Gordon Bristol's work, Amy Clark's work, Matt Welch, Michelle Berry, Salta, the, the BPS. This was a team effort trying to do as best we could to get as much of the fire suppression done, to get that original grant that Michelle and I submitted a few years ago. And the deadline is literally December 31st. And so I just want to call your attention to the cover memo. And one of, Michelle and I, absolutely 100% transparent in every way. So what is being billed is absolutely the work that has been finished. But the project itself is not finished, and everybody knows that. But, and the reason it's the copper piping or the black piping that's necessary to actually put it in the schools, and it's behind for the chief reason or a chief reason is the, certainly the pandemic. And so for Michelle and I, and when we do take this stuff very, very seriously, it's our licensure. We would never do anything and put the district at risk or our licensure at risk. We have, Gordon's communicated with Amy Clark, and we've got great support from the DUE on this. So we are asking for payment of what is complete, which is about $62,000, which really is what we asked for at the very beginning. It's just a little bit higher than the original harriman estimate a few years ago. This is a great thing. It's a great thing to get fire suppression. It's a great thing to get this done by 62,000, you know, 62,000 from that safety infrastructure grant. The only thing, Justin, I'll try to remind the board, if we could have, go to the, the town office for the notar, remember we did this before? You all went to get it notarized. If we can do that by Monday, that way we can send it in and get, and I'll send an email out, or Donna will. But I just wanted to be, we're going to submit the affidavit, the notarized affidavit in that cover memo, just to make, we're completely transparent about what we've done and why we've done it. Does that, does that make sense?
It does, and it is a great thing. So thank you, and Michelle, and I know the building committee and Norm for, for making this happen. It's, it's great.
You know, Jim, I, I really want to say thank you to Gordon, Steve, and Michelle. You know, when I, the day I got elected, I walked in Michelle's office and I pointed to her bulletin board and I said, what is that? And she said to me, that is the grant for the fire suppression if we get it through. And she, and I remember that discussion, and it was a vision she had pinned on her board. And now we're able to submit. And, and Michelle, you know, Steve, Gordon, and, and this board, it's a great day. And Gordon's been on top of it since day one when we approved it, talking to the state. And I'm just very pleased that we're going to be able to get this. So thank you, Steve and Michelle and Gordon and this board.
And please include Barry, Doug Proctor, T, H L Turner.
Agreed.
They truly, and I should have mentioned Doug before, they all worked very well together to, to move this. And Bill, Bill coordinated the system and different paths around. I mean, Bill did it. Story. I mean, this is a huge project, getting money back, getting it fired, getting it sprinkled was a huge effort by so many people. Bill, Doug, Barry, Gordon, Michelle, boom, a whole bunch of people.
And Chief Yale was very much part of this project too. So thank you. Thank you very much.
So Steve, that's available at the town hall tomorrow for signatures?
Michelle's bringing it by tomorrow, I think. I don't know. So Monday would probably be better.
Oh, Monday. Okay.
Just that way.
I'm going to bring it by tomorrow morning as soon as they open.
So maybe, so you should be okay. And I think they have a little reduced hours on Friday too, just to.
You need all five of us to sign it?
I, it's, it's great if we have all five. Yeah.
When did you buy?
Majority is fine, so.
Okay, cool. All right.
Great. And then last item is the monthly financial. Michelle?
Sure. So in the Google Drive, you guys should have the monthly financial, which shows a little over 613,000 as the expected fund balance. And the amount that we talked about earlier, so it's a little bit shy of that, like less than $6,000. But as we've talked before, some changes have been made even since this has been done. And so that is definitely going to happen, barring anything unforeseen happening that's out of our control. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only thing I wanted to add, and thank you, Michelle, for not, so the, the, the revenue from the fire suppression will be charged back to the project because it's, it's, it's being, you know, because that's the, the area that is so. We'll be able to do, you know, more fun, more work in the project because of it, which is pretty, and we're going to talk about that on Monday. But I just think that's really great.
Definitely. Any questions for Michelle on, on the monthly financial? All right. So before we move to our, our second public comment, is anything else on any board members' minds? All right. So at this point, I'll open up our second public comment. And so if you're an attendee and you wish to provide public comment, you can just move your cursor or your mouse down towards the bottom of your screen. There should be a raise your hand button that you can click, and that will let us know that you have public comment. And I'm not seeing any comments or any hands being raised. And so at this point, I will close public comment, and we have a series of action items to start with. So I would ask if there's a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's Schedule B nomination slate as presented.
Same move.
Second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Seth?
Call me?
Yep. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're very faint on the.
Oh, am I? I apologize. I'll, I'll try to speak up. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Goupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes, so that motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to, oh, I'm sorry, we're tabling this one. So scratch what I just said. So is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to grant the following requests for early retirement? Pam Moscow, social science, social studies teacher, Hopkinton Middle and High Schools. Diana Moore, an English teacher, Hopkinton Middle and High Schools. Jim Bizar, mathematics teacher, Hopkinton High School. Sue Roberts, mathematics teacher, Hopkinton Middle School. Trish Roberts, elementary teacher, Maple Street School.
Same moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a great lineup, Jim. All those teachers have just been great for this district. Just want to let, just want to say that. They've taught some of my kids, and you're just, if they're, you're listening, you know, you're awesome. That's all I wanted to say.
Think we all second that.
And I hope we can have a retirement party.
Non-Zoom.
On Zoom.
All right. Seeing no other discussion. Norm?
How was that for discussion? Norm Goupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, and that motion passes. And finally, is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent of schools' recommendation to authorize the request for payment as presented for the Harold Martin School Sprinkler Project?
Same moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great job, everybody.
Mr. Goupel?
Norm Goupel proudly says yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, and so that motion passes. Steve, do you have a need for a non-public session this evening?
I don't, unless you do.
I, I do not. And so. So I think we're all set. Sorry, that was a long, that was a long pause.
But we need a non-meeting, correct?
Well, I was going to ask the board if we would like to have a non-meeting tonight, or we can have a non-meeting prior to our Tuesday meeting. So it's, I guess it's your preference which one you'd rather do.
This was short. No comment tonight. It's 7:21. I'm game.
Okay, so we can do that. I, I don't think it'll take more than 10 minutes. It should be, it should be relatively quick if folks are okay. So, so what I would do is I will adjourn this meeting. I will send you all an email in just a minute or two for a non, for a non-meeting link. And we'd have a non-meeting to discuss negotiations for those who might not know what we're talking about. And so expect that in your inbox in a few minutes, and I think we can probably keep it to about 10 minutes or so. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. We'll see everybody on Tuesday at 5:30. And for the board, don't forget Monday to, tomorrow or Monday, to go, to go sign the paperwork at Town Hall. Oh, and thank you, Julia. Oh, and thank you, Juliette. All right. Enjoy the snow, everybody.